And welcome to tonight's school committee meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First of all, I'd like to say a huge thank you to Liz Popolowski of Shrewsbury Media Connection, who records and provides live broadcast of all of our programming, also for her extra special technical support tonight. This meeting will be rebroadcast on channel twenty-nine between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting, and is also available on the SMC YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is public participation, but nobody has expressed an interest to address the committee. However, in the future, if anyone wishes to participate in this portion of the meeting, they should contact the chair prior to the beginning of the meeting. Once recognized, speakers may have up to three minutes to present their material. The committee will also review and consider any written comments which may be presented before the meeting. Next on our agenda are chairperson and members' reports. Do we have anything from any of the members?
Yes.
Oh. I would just like to note a huge thank you to all of our classrooms, the individuals in our school, and our district leadership team for all sorts of end-of-the-year activities that are going on. I know many parents are very busy with attending those, but I know there are also between eighth-grade celebration videos I just got, a fourth grade. I don't even have a visible view at my house, and to the high school things that are going on, but there's carnivals and field days and all sorts of activities. So, big thanks to the parents, and particularly out of our PTOs that help support many of those activities. So, with that, we'll turn it over to superintendent's report. Dr. Swer.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. First off, I'd like to congratulate the Shrewsbury High School baseball team, who earned a berth in the state Division One Final Four. They had a valiant effort last night in Worcester at Fitton Field at Holy Cross, where they lost a tough game to the number-one seed Franklin High School. But I had a chance to watch a few of the games most recently, and I'm just particularly impressed with the mental toughness and grit that this particular team showed and the team spirit. They represented their school and their community well, and want to congratulate them on all their success. And speaking of grit, I think it's appropriate, as we come to the end of the school year, to thank collectively the staff of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. I could not be more proud of the effort they put forward this year to really persevere during what was a very difficult year. I'm deeply appreciative, of course, of our students and our families, but I particularly want to point out just what excellent work our staff did during a year that I think was more trying than we expected it to be in a variety of ways. I know that people see things in the media about the stress that educators are under, and that many are leaving the profession. We have not. We've had a very small number of staff over the last two years who have chosen to leave the profession prematurely. We actually had fewer retirements than we projected for this year, and fewer resignations. And I think that that's a credit to the collective support that our staff are giving to one another. We've done our best to try to support their work over the course of the year, and we'll continue to try to do our best to make sure that we provide all the tools and the resources and the support necessary for them to do their job well. But from our support staff, to our professional educators, to our leaders, they have just put forward an incredible effort this year, and I'm deeply appreciative of that. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great. Thank you so very much. Our first time scheduled appointment is student recognition for science fair and coding competition winners. And I believe, Dr. Swer, I'd love your assistance here, because I think we have Mark Zuckus, who's with us this evening. We have some gentlemen here who are working hard on getting their tech to work right before this meeting, so we're glad you're with us. And I think we also have some members in the audience that are from our staff. It looks like I have a longer list than I think our meeting here is. Help me out.
Sure. I'm happy to make some introductions here, and want to. Not with us this evening is Tracy Calabresi, who is our computer science teacher at Shrewsbury High School in the Instructional Technology and Media Services Department. And we're going to first introduce to you two of our first students, Alex Kenecko and Arnav Sharma. And their computer science project, which is called Snake Runner Game, earned the Mass STEM Hubs Student Industry Connects First Place High School Computer Science Project Award in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which we're very proud of. We're very pleased that Alex and Arnav are here with us tonight to actually demonstrate the coding that they did and their project. And so with that, I will turn it over to these gentlemen, and they can take us through a little demonstration of what they did. So, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Kenecko.
And I'm Arnav Sharma. We were the ones who developed this game.
Yeah, so we were in the computer science class, and we had a project to make. And we teamed up. We were thinking of creating a maze game, but having just one maze is kind of boring. So, we decided to create an infinite maze. So, I'll demonstrate the game right here. Oh, yeah. And this is our code. So, I'll play it right now. So, as you can see here, this is our Maze Runner game. So, the black squares are like the walls. The gray squares, or, yeah, it's like, the gray squares are like the paths. And this green block right there, that's a snake. So, the way it plays is that I can use the up arrow, right arrow, down arrow, and left arrow to move the snake. And the purpose of the game is to navigate the snake through a maze, make it go as high as it can. And as you can see, like there, I got the six, which is the score indicator. Yeah. So, and the point of the game is to go as far high up as you can. So, as you can see, the snake is going up. And if it gets stuck, it's game over. Yeah, so we used Python to create this game. And we created an algorithm, which is basically like a section of code to infinitely generate a dismay. And an also important component of it is that we made sure that it's always a path for the snake to go up. So, it's never like a wall just blocking the snake. So, it's always the way to go up.
Yeah. So, the hardest part of the code was definitely to make the algorithm that makes sure that there was always a path to go up in the infinitely generating maze. And with the guidance of our teacher, Ms. Calabresi, we have definitely worked harder each time we faced a red block, and would definitely like to thank her. And we originally submitted this, our project, to Industry Connects to get feedback, and definitely weren't expecting a order to speak anything like this. So, we're super grateful and especially surprised for this.
Yeah. I thank you for your time and allowing us to share our projects to everyone here.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Before, I know we have another student, but I would welcome any comments from my colleagues, please.
Thank you. I know back in the dark ages when I was in college and had to take a coding class, I think it was a cold ball, I can't remember. It was the hardest thing I ever did, and I don't remember even what it was about. I just hated it. So, I think when you do this, had you ever done any coding? Because it's not easy. And you really have to be able to understand. Had you done it at home, or is this your first class? How did this all come to be?
I mean, I had some, I mean, I had some coding knowledge before I took the class. Like, I learned Python and a bit of C++ beforehand. But I think that the class really allowed me to develop like my problem-solving and critical thinking skills and group work as well. So, all of that, I think, helped me the most to create this project.
Great.
Yeah, similarly to Alex, I've also had some coding experience from my dad, especially in Python. And of course, the one who taught me was my dad over here, software engineer, so not much of a big surprise. And, yeah, this was our first in-school class for developing coding, so.
That's great. I think when you talk about critical thinking and working together, because in the real world, if you're working on coding, you're going to be in a group and doing that. So, this is great skills, not only the technical piece, but also the soft skills that you're learning. So, congratulations. I find it extremely impressive for someone, like I said, who has no clue what any of this is. Thank you.
Yeah. And I also would like to just express my appreciation. I don't understand what I'm looking at on the screen in front of me here, but at the same time, you know, I'm glad we can provide a little bit of an exposure to some more things. Some of you have that at home to begin with, but for students maybe who aren't getting that at home. And I'm appreciating that you're both, if I'm correct, are in the sophomore class. So, will you hope to take some more of the classes that are in the computer science department? And if so, what are you thinking about? Or what do we need to be offering? What would be of interest to you?
I think that probably computer science, too. I guess, like, I guess a course which I think people will be interested in would be AP Computer Science, because, like, I mean, I know a lot of people enjoy to code, and I think that it's a lot of demand for it.
Thank you. How about for yourself?
Definitely. I'll definitely pursue this as a career. And, yeah, we'll look into different developing languages, such as JavaScript and all. Yeah, that's pretty much in-school and outside of school, with the support of my teacher.
Wonderful. Well, we certainly appreciate your being here tonight. We're glad your family could be with us. They must be awfully proud. Dr. Swer.
No, I certainly want to thank Alex and Arnav. It's really outstanding work, and this is a different language. It takes not only sort of the science and mathematical engineering thinking, but also language thinking to make this work and understanding how this is going to translate into something that's concrete. Clearly, there is a very significant market for computer software engineers. We were talking about, in a different context, just what we know is happening in that field in terms of compensation. And it can be a lucrative career and something that we're very pleased we're able to offer some initial experiences at the high school to see if students might be interested or like that and start to develop those skills. We'll certainly take your thoughts about AP Computer Science under consideration. And we have been working, we had begun to work just before the pandemic on doing some work with sort of a statewide consortium around increasing opportunities for programming kinds of experiences for students. And we have been able to expand the offerings a bit within the high school program. But I think as we look forward, that's something we're going to continue to keep under consideration of how we might provide opportunities. And if it's not coursework, as you heard a report last week at your last meeting, helping finding ways to make connections to the industry or job shadowing or internships, things that might be opportunities there as well. But again, congratulations. And what I think might make sense right now to do is to transition to having Nevin come up. We're going to need to flip over to the Apple TV, so I can share some slides for Nevin. And when Nevin is done and has answered questions from the committee, then we'll recognize all three of our students and have the chance to be recognized by the committee. So, at this time, we'll have Nevin come on up to the desk, and we'll get his slides up on the screen as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
There we go.
Nevin, while Dr. Swer gets your slides up for us, why don't you introduce yourself? Tell us, what year are you at the high school? You can have a seat.
Do you mind if I stand, actually?
No. No, of course not. It's totally fine.
Okay. So...
Can you hear? Yeah.
Oh, the standing mic.
Yeah. Will that work? Oh, you can stand at the standing microphone, too. I just want to make sure people at home can hear you. There you go.
And by way of introduction, this is Nevin Tenegar, who is a first-place winner in the state Science and Engineering Fair from Shrewsbury High School. There's some slides that'll be on the screen, but first, he has some props for us this evening, so we'll let Nevin take it away.
Yeah. So, as Dr. Swer said, my name's Nevin Tenegar. I'm a current sophomore at Shrewsbury High School. And I have participated in science fair for the past three years, starting in, or past four years, actually, starting in seventh grade. And I actually did this project through the high school's research methods program. So, first of all, I want to say a big thanks to Mr. H., who is our science department head, as well as my teacher, Mrs. Phillips, who really helped me a lot throughout my project, as well as my lab advisor, Mr. Wood, who helped me, as you will see later in this. So, my project is essentially about improving the efficiency of aircraft. So, every year, aircraft emit over nine-hundred-and-eighteen-million tons of carbon dioxide into Earth's atmosphere. And my goal was to create what are called winglets, which I'll discuss a little bit later. But I wanted to create a design that would improve the efficiency by around one percent, which, while it doesn't seem like a lot, over the course of an entire year of emissions, that's a very significant impact. So, yeah, I guess there's the next slide. So, the principle behind winglets lies in how an aircraft generates lift. An aircraft generates lift by having an area of high pressure under the wing and low pressure above the wing. And what the air seeks to do is it tries to regain equilibrium. And as it does this, the high-pressure air pushes up on the wings and generates the lift that allows the aircraft to fly. However, not all of that air pushes directly up on the wings, and some of that air slips around the edges of the wings, creating what are known as wingtip vortices. And wingtip vortices reduce the pressure differential above and below the wing, which reduces the efficiency of the aircraft in general. And to solve this, there have been a couple of solutions, such as a canted winglet, which is simply a piece of the wing that sticks up at the end and that blocks that flow over the tip of the wing, as well as a raked wingtip, which you can see on this aircraft here, which shifts where the wingtip vortice forms to increase the efficiency of the aircraft. So, next slide. So, for my project, I 3D-printed several different winglet designs. For example, here's just one of the samples that I printed. This is from the second phase of my project. But what I did was, is actually, the school had a wind tunnel, which is where I actually was working with Mr. Wood. And I didn't actually know the school had a wind tunnel until I went looking. So, that goes to show that there are resources if you look for them. And I had a control section, which was simply a wing section with no winglets. And then I had five different designs. And for each one, I 3D-printed three models to reduce the variation of any 3D-printing imperfections. I then tested them at three different angles of attack. And the angle of attack is how tilted the wing is as to the incoming airflow, which impacts how much of drag comes from the wingtip vortices. So, in total, I think I had around five-hundred-and-eighty tests at the different angles of attack, for which I recorded the lift and drag values. And the lift is how much upwards force there is, and drag is how much force there is parallel to the airflow. There we go to the next slide to look at the results. So, this is basically a collection of all the results that I had from the first phase of my testing. And what it showed was, out of my designs, two of them showed significant improvement over the control wing. And at the fifteen-degree angle of attack, there was even an efficiency improvement of up to eighty percent. And I measured efficiency by using what is known as the lift-to-drag ratio, which is where you divide the lift value by the drag value, which gives you a holistic understanding of, are you improving only lift at the expense of more drag, or are you improving both lift and drag, which is what you're looking for. However, you also have to take into account how much time an aircraft spends at each angle of attack during flight, where it spends around ninety percent of its time at what is known as cruising altitude, which is where it's level. So, taking that into account, and when I took a weighted percentage average to look into that, I actually saw that there was not a lot of significant improvement on that. However, when I did go into my second phase of the project, I focused on the best-performing designs to try to maximize the impact that I had at the highest angles of attack while minimizing the additional drag at the low angles of attack. You can go to my final slide. So, these are the next steps that I'm going to be looking to, and I've actually started a couple of them. So, also during this project, I worked with a professor at WPI, David Olinger, who is a professor of fluid dynamics there. And I was able to try and use one of WPI's wind tunnels, which allowed me to run it at higher speeds and to test more quickly. However, that wind tunnel at the time had an issue, so I wasn't able to use it. So, instead, I used a simulation software, called a CFD software, or computational fluid dynamics, which allowed me to virtually simulate the tests that I would have done in real life. And using that, I was able to collect even more data. And in the future, I'm going to be looking into tweaking different features of the two best-performing designs that I had. I'm also going to be looking into filing a patent if these designs can show that there is a significant improvement over current designs, so that they can in the end. And my goal is to make sure that all aircraft are flying as efficiently as possible, so that they're minimizing the amount of pollution in Earth.
Wow. There are so many topics that you have just talked about, which I want to follow up on. I do just need to say, the number of people that you mentioned who were supportive in this process for you, I want to thank all of them. But also, I can't help but saying we have a lot of young people who come before us to talk about the interesting things that we don't know a lot about, which is great. But both your public speaking skills and your communication skills about some very complicated concepts in fluid dynamics are just really impressive. So, thank you for taking a complicated topic and turning to something that I could understand at least a little bit. Please, my colleagues, Dr. Wensky.
Yeah. I have to say, between the first presentation of computer coding and now this presentation here with the data and the analysis, I feel like I've extended my workday a little bit, only I'm hearing from high school sophomores, which is extremely impressive. So, congratulations to all three of you. I'm just curious, from your presentation, what inspired the project for you?
Yeah. So, me personally, I've had a lifelong passion for aerospace. So, in my initial project notebook, which is something that all students have to do as they do science fair, to kind of log your progress, to keep track of what you're doing just for yourself and also for the judges, I kind of already knew what I wanted to do. But I think one of the best things that I did is I created a scatter plot, where on the x-axis, I had how interested I was in the topic. On the y-axis, I had, like, how much I already knew about that topic. And I think what I tried to look for is I tried to look for things that it wasn't something that I already knew a lot about, and I wouldn't learn much. But at the same time, it wasn't something that I'm not interested about at all. And I think that's something that's really important with any, before tackling any projects, is you want to think, are you interested in that? Are you going to follow through on that? Because, to be honest, a lot of the testing was boring, like five-hundred-and-eighty tests in a wind tunnel. It's not fun. But if you have that interest in the project, you're going to be able to keep on continuing on that project to finally see the data that you get at the end and be satisfied that the time that you spent was worth it.
That's great. And this is to be continued, right? You're going to...
Yeah. Still continuing on.
Well, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Extremely impressive. I agree with Ms. Heffernan. You do not seem like a high school sophomore, somebody who's already out of college. I'm so glad you told us about why the wings are bent up, because I'd look out an airplane and go, it must do something that way, but I didn't know. So, now I know. I also did not know that there was a wind tunnel at the high school. That's very impressive to know that we have a wind tunnel at the high school. How did you, and I was going to ask how this, so you had aerospace, you've been interested probably since you were little, like you said. How did you get involved with the WPI professor? How did that come to be, to that component?
So, this is actually sort of an interesting story. So, when I was in middle school, I did FLL, Lego Robotics, which is something that's offered through the middle school, but I did it on my own team outside of school. And through that, I actually bet one of the, or that year, it was a challenge about having humans survive long durations in space, which also obviously aligned with my interests. And I talked to one of the professors, who is an uncle of one of the kids on my team. His name is Raghu Kaalagi, or Professor Kaalagi. And I guess it just shows that you can have connections over a long time. But I was able to basically talk to him, and he was able to point me towards a professor who I could talk to. And I think that's also something that I think SHS could also use a lot of, is leveraging the connections that we have to lots of universities in Worcester. I don't know how much there is of that currently, but I kind of just did this independently from somebody that I already knew. But I think that SHS could also have those sort of things built into the system. And I know that during a normal year, you can also contact labs at UMass and WPI. But I think that really talking to the professor helped a lot to get that deep understanding of the topics that I was discussing and researching throughout the entire project. So, I think that's helpful in general.
Excellent. Yeah, I agree. I think it's one of the, whatever we can do to help our students in any interests they have. And you're right, we have a ton of colleges around us that we should be able to have some type of partnership with. I think you've got an extremely bright future. I mean, you're doing extremely well already, and I was really happy to hear you say you want to patent it. Now, your secret's out. Congratulations. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to congratulate all three of you as well. Very impressive, all of these both presentations. I had a question about the 3D-printing part of it. Where did you do that, and how did that come about?
Yeah. So, I'm actually pretty fortunate that I myself own a 3D printer, which I got like a couple of years ago. The high school also has a couple of 3D printers, but they're sort of like half the time broken, half the time working. I think also, I printed one of my wings from the middle school, because I personally worked with Mr. Molarella while he was setting up the design lab. And they have lots of 3D printers, and they're usually working. So, I printed one of them, but most of them I did print at home. I'm sort of fortunate to have access to that sort of thing, but it was just the easiest way for me to print them really quickly.
You've certainly given us a bunch to think about, I think, between, for all three of you, your interest in sort of trying to find things that were going to challenge you, and that just creating a maze wasn't good enough. It had to be infinitely generating, which was not a term I had heard before, but it makes sense. And coming up with a scatter plot about your own interests certainly is, appreciate your balancing of, I need to develop your own competencies out of space. And the age you're at is not something we see very often. So, certainly, I know we are impressed. But you're really raising some great points about our role as a district to help make some of those connections. And you said you had some of your own, but if a young person didn't, what else could we do to make it a little easier? And I'm sure Dr. Swer is taking notes about what's at the high school lab, and if there's things that we could be doing to invest in to make sure that you have the, as many tools at your disposal that we're able to put in the hands, because you're all clearly making use of them. So, that is wonderful. And we are just very, very proud. And you're out there representing us at the state level. And I know even at the International Science Fair, too, it's just, we couldn't have better representatives in all three cases. So, Dr. Swer.
Thank you. Really appreciate Nevin. I also should mention that not only was he a first-place winner at the Massachusetts Science Fair, he's one of the very few students who was selected to participate in the International Science Fair, IACF, which is a very high honor, and actually rated a fourth place there, which is quite remarkable as well. I appreciate the comments from the school committee, and we're obviously very proud of all three of these students and the work that they've done that is sophisticated beyond what you'd expect from high school tenth graders. And certainly appreciate the support they receive from the faculty, the connections. It fits right with the strategic plan that we started five years ago to build more partnerships with higher education institutions locally. And that, some of that work was interrupted, of course, the last couple of years, but that's something that we're looking forward to resuming. And I think that there's a lot of rich opportunity there for that to be happening. I was very pleased to hear about the connection with the design lab at Oak Middle School, which is something we invested through the Colonial Fund a few years ago to set up. And that's something that Mr. Molarella's done an excellent job with, and the fact that Nevin started with the science fair at the middle school level that Mr. Molarella runs as well. So, seeing that continuity and that connection from middle school right through the high school to start to develop kids' interests at the middle level, and then have them really be able to roll their sleeves up and get deeper into it at the high school is an important opportunity. But again, we congratulate you for your successes. And at this time, if you'd come up and shake the committee's hand, and we have some certificates for you, and how about a round of applause from those...
Congratulations. All right. Thanks. Congratulations.
Well done. Congratulations. Excellent.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
There we go. Well, thank you again for keeping us entertained this evening. I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda. You're welcome to excuse yourself if you would like to, the family that are here. But not quite as much fun, but good for us. We're going to, we have a take a vote on an acceptance of a gift. Thanks for being here. Per, just a little background, per school committee policy, nine-eleven, gifts of over $5,000 must be formally accepted by this school committee. And the Shrewsbury Middle School PTO, I understand, would like to make a donation of $16,000 for courtyard improvements and classroom equipment at Oak Middle School. I see Mr. Collins making his way up. Should I, please?
Just a few other brief comments to add to that would be, again, we appreciate all the work of the Sherwood Oak Middle School PTO and all of our PTOs throughout the year to support schools with additional resources in a variety of different ways. And as you mentioned, this gift would go towards improving the courtyard at Oak Middle School with some outdoor furnishings and benches. Also, a plan to purchase twelve sets of portable...
Also, a plan to purchase 12 sets of portable pickleball equipment and also some replacement CPR dummies for the health education curriculum. So, that's just a little bit more specific information for the committee to consider with this acceptance.
Wonderful. Any questions?
It's a huge thank you to the PTO. I mean, it used to be field trips and things like that, but they really support our budget in ways that are, we used to be able to do through the appropriated budget. And this is a significant amount of money to come in from a PTO organization. So, I think that's a huge thank you to everybody who's done that.
I would certainly support that. I know they're also hosting a pretty significant carnival tomorrow night, so they're clearly generating a fair bit of funds and certainly appreciate their, these additional funds to be made available to us. We have no other comments then. I would like to call for a motion to accept a donation of $16,000 from the Sherwood Middle, is it Sherwood and Oak Middle School PTO?
Correct.
For courtyard improvements and classroom equipment to particularly be used at Oak Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor could do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, this is unanimously, please pass on our thanks, Mr. Collins.
I shall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next item on our agenda is another time scheduled appointment, and that is the district response to the pandemic report. And Dr. Sawyer, I'll happily turn it over to you.
Thank you. This being the final school committee meeting of the year and I hope is the final COVID update that I'll need to give as the pandemic abates over time and moves into its newest phases. But I want to make sure that we remind everyone, we have gone through this school year with the focus on providing full-time in-school learning. We achieved that for this year. We're very pleased all of our students remained in school full-time with minimal disruptions. And we used a variety of mitigation strategies. And while we certainly have a large number of cases over the course of the school year, and we know that there was some number of or amount of in-school spread based on what we could observe, that like mostly came from outside of the school, but we did everything possible to mitigate the impact on student learning. We also wanted, obviously, to create a sense of belonging, to support students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, which we know have been compromised and by the pandemic as well, as well as making sure we're providing learning opportunities for students to meet their academic needs. As far as the Johns Hopkins Report, Massachusetts, the same as last week, remains at a 6%, seven-day positivity rate, which is the sixth lowest among the states that are still reporting. That shows you the history of that positivity rate, so remaining pretty steady at about 6% over the last few weeks. As far as the age group, we continue to see that ages 20 to 39 are the largest number of cases in Massachusetts. This is on a 100,000-person basis. It's come down a bit since the June 6th, the report on ages 0 to 9 and 10 to 19, you know, almost halved in terms of teenagers. So, we're seeing those numbers trend in the right direction. In terms of hospital admissions, also per 100,000 people, this is something that is, remains to be very rare for young people, and the most significant impact is on the elderly, which we've seen that pattern all year long. In terms of wastewater monitoring, we're still seeing the numbers remain low, and we are pleased that that's the case. We're not seeing a signal of any spikes coming in terms of number of cases. Locally, there was not a report from the town this week because of a state reporting issue. We can show, you can see the number of students has come down significantly since late May. So, we're again seeing those numbers move in the right direction. As far as our positivity rate of all students who are aware of being positive, it is one-half of 1% for June. This is the last 14-day positivity rate for Shrewsbury that was reported. Excuse me, and over time, we expect that to be trending, coming down based on the more recent numbers we've seen. In terms of cases this week, we've had 20 so far, and this brings us to just under 2,800 cases for the year among our students and staff. This is a visual of our cases by day and by week. So, you can see that very significant spike at the beginning of the year and then the smaller spike we saw in May as abated. This is to visualize the numbers by school. And this is by grade, so you can see that sort of distribution by age. This shows you the total cases in the district, how many were students versus staff. And as far as our absenteeism, that for June has been very good. Of course, people want to be in school for Field Day and carnivals and all those good things, but obviously, there's been lower rates of illness as well. So, we're happy to see those numbers come down. You can see that visualized here. And again, our goal, which we set at the beginning of the year, I feel very good that we've been able to achieve that. And be happy to answer any questions the committee has at this time.
Yes, please.
Just a comment, as this is our last regularly scheduled meeting of the 2021-2022 school year, to reiterate something that I've said in the past, which is to praise the clear, consistent, transparent communication from the district to all of our stakeholders, including the general public, on the course of the pandemic, how it has impacted our schools' case numbers. I think that there was a moment early on where there was a question as to whether or not maybe we were oversharing, but I think what we saw consistently throughout this experience is that the community appreciated the frequency, predictability, and volume of the communication about how this pandemic was impacting our staff and students. And just so, again, as this is our last regular meeting of the year, I think it's important once again to single out that in times of crisis, I think that members of the public really felt respected and valued by being presented with this high volume of information. So, kudos to the superintendent, to our nursing staff in all of our buildings, and everyone who was involved in our response and communications around the pandemic.
Just to add to, I think this level of reporting, you know, every meeting, I think, was an outstanding public service to the school community. And I agree with everything Mr. Powell said. I just, I think it's been very important to peace of mind for all our parents and students to see this level of detail as to how COVID's impacted Shrewsbury as opposed to kind of looking nationally. I think it's definitely level-setted what the expectations are in our town. And I just appreciate just your entire team staying laser-focused on keeping minimal disruptions to in-person learning, because that's what we wanted to achieve this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I'd certainly echo the comments. I think there are many people that we could thank. It's almost hard to, because has this impacted every staff person COVID over the last two-plus years? And noticing members of the, in the audience right now who are also really, have juggled some incredible needs at different points in time. And I know a lot of our staff are exhausted, and we hear that and we get it. And we're all ready for you all to get a good, well-deserved summer break. Hopefully, we can start next year in a slightly different space. But thank you for the report this evening. The next item on our agenda was scheduled as a special education parent advisory, known as CPAC, an annual report. Unfortunately, that is not going to be, going to need to be rescheduled for a future meeting due to a family emergency that led to a last-minute out-of-state travel for a member of their leadership team. So, we will look to reschedule that just as soon as we can. And our fifth time scheduled appointment tonight is on social-emotional learning and survey results and reports. So, as a matter of background, Ms. Amy Cottler, I know, is going to be joining us, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And Shrewsbury Public Schools is taking action to gather data about the degree to which students and families experience belonging in Shrewsbury, an item we talk a lot about, and this is studying some data on that topic. So, the district worked with Panorama, an education and technology company, to survey staff at the schools and families at home, and the survey results have helped to identify some strengths, needs, and trends for the public schools. So, we look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you very much. I look forward to sharing what has been data that so far we've looked at internally and having this be kind of a part of our regular practice. So, without further ado, let me just ground us in kind of the why of our approach to doing this. You've heard me talk about and seen me project the continuous improvement cycle a lot, but I think it bears repeating that it's really going to be important for us to include in our feedback loop perspectives of students and families, especially if our overall goal is to grow cultures of belonging. So, when we're thinking about surveying students on this topic and on many others, their perspectives about the impact of our actions kind of drives what we need to focus on going further. So, we're looking at this through the lens of thinking about some of the more recent initiatives to address mental health and social-emotional learning, but also to kind of sense of, general sense of strengths and need. And then especially to think about and better understand the experiences of students by subgroups. So, one of the things that we'll look at is different ways of picturing the data by category. So, just as a refresher, we're looking at two domains of social-emotional learning when we're administering these surveys. One is looking at students' perceptions of their skills and competencies within social-emotional learning, and the other is what are the supports and environments in Shrewsbury that help kids to grow those skills? And you can see that there's a lot, you know from your report, that there are a lot of different question sets that could be used in a panorama survey. But we really focused our surveys on the ones that aligned with strategic priorities and district goals. So, emotional regulation, self-efficacy, and social awareness were some of the social-emotional areas of focus. And then cultural awareness and action and sense of belonging fell under our equity and inclusion surveys. So, our goal in terms of looking at this big picture is improving experiences for students and strengthening the relationships between students and educators and also educators and families, and also supporting the strong cultures where we find them. So, for the past few years, we've been collaborating to support inclusive practice. And although our intentions are always really good, it's also important to measure our impact and see whether our actions are really effective. So, the first question in terms of looking at our survey results is what feedback do our students have for us about social-emotional learning? And this survey tool from Panorama allows us to kind of efficiently review student responses across grade spans. And also, the visuals, which I'll show to you in a minute, allow for kind of a quick comparison across both grade levels, schools, and demographic groups. For example, we can look at perceptions of boys versus girls. We can look at students with disabilities versus general education. We could look at the impact of economic disadvantage in terms of answering some of these questions. And we can, in general, reflect on kind of who are we reaching and who are we not reaching yet? So, this is one topic. A topic summarizes questions, a range of questions within one domain. So, when students are answering questions about emotional regulation, they had to reflect on questions like, how often were they able to pull themselves out of a bad mood, for example? And I won't read all of those questions, but the social, the emotional regulation score is a composite of their individual answers to those questions. And while we can't see a student's individual answers to the, how often were you able to pull yourself out of a bad mood question, we can see for individual students their overall emotion regulation score. So, I'm going to demonstrate what that looks like within the platform. I'm hoping that technology continues to support me in that, so I beg your patience if it doesn't. Because I think that seeing is believing, and you can get a sense of the analysis that we've been doing with the district leadership team by watching. So, let me just bring this up and show it full screen. So, that's still a little small for you. Sorry about that. But if we look at this, for example, we're looking at the social emotion, social-emotional survey results. So, I'm going to scroll down to that. So, you can see here Panorama Student SEL Competency and Well-Being Measures. And we're going to look at emotional regulation. So, right away, I can see kind of a quick result of here's the percent favorable for that question set, the one that I just showed you on the screen. Here's kind of our percentile ranking according to national norms. So, one of the advantages of this particular survey tool is it allows us to look to our results compared to schools that are non-urban with similar rates of economic advantage, et cetera. And then it shows us kind of in a very quick overview, the difference between the last administration, which is in the winter, and the most recent administration in the spring. When I click on this, oops, sorry, driving is a little bit interesting. I'm gonna look at my screen. Come on. There we go. It shows in graphic form kind of that change over time. It shows kind of the result in greater detail. But what I think is really important in terms of looking at this lens, not only from grade level, but also from the perspective of different student groups, respond to this question set as compared to people who are not learning English. What about students who are economically disadvantaged? And you can see the impact of that particular group characteristic compared to others. What about students with disabilities? How does this answer differ by gender? You can see not very much for this particular question. You can see grade level results as well. So, we can look at this information by school, by grade level, and then by subgroup. And all of that is really helpful, and we're thinking about what specific follow-up questions we might ask. As I'm looking down, I can also see kind of the, I can't see student individual answers for questions, but I can see which of the questions had different answers. So, under the domains of emotional regulation, you can see the one that was really a trigger for kids is when everybody around you gets angry, how relaxed can you stay? So, when we think about the investment we've had in mindfulness, or we think about how kids need some help in terms of managing their emotions, I think that that's a really important statistic to look at. We can also look at, for example, that that went up by 6% or by six points from the winter. So, I'm really curious to see, because this is the first year we've had kind of three data points, what that looks like long-term. I'm going to exit out of the platform now, but there's one more thing I want to show you from an educator perspective, because when we get these results, we can share them with our educators too, and they can see in just the same format kind of this information. But it comes with a playbook. So, you know, if I click on this lesson, there's a lesson built in around how you could support kids in having a temperature check when they're entering your classroom in the morning as a warm-up. And some of these things have been really affirming for teachers because we find them in the lessons that our educators have developed in conjunction with our school and counseling team. So, it minimally kind of affirms the strategies that have been in place to support kids up until this point. So, I'm going to exit out of this and actually close that out, so we have less confusion here. Okay. And now, I'm just going to show you kind of our results of that survey. Emotional regulation was one component, but I'll show you all of them by grade span, Are you seeing that on all of your screens?
See, over there, you can see it.
Oh, okay.
Turn around.
It looks like the system may need a break for the summer, too.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to orient you to the slide first. So, this shows our most recent survey scores. So, this is the spring 2022. In light blue, you can see the social, I'm sorry, light blue is the spring results. The darker blue is the winter from this year, and the green is the spring previous. So, that would be the spring of last year. When you look at each of the topics, they're at the bottom of your screen. So, social awareness has been down since last year, most recently by 1% since the winter administration. I'm not going to lose sleep over a 1% difference, but I think it's just interesting as we can see the trend lines. Although self-efficacy dipped in the winter, the most recent results show that students scored this topic at 70% favorable, which matches our first administration in the spring of '21. But by far, the lowest scoring is emotional regulation, and it's gratifying to see 3% more students scored this topic favorably since the winter. And this is a key area to continuously monitor, because as you'll see, this topic is a need that's identified across grade spans. So, this is results for students in grades 3 to 5. This is the same data for students in grades 6 through 12. So, the biggest So the biggest grades at this grade span had to do with self-efficacy. This topic received two percent more favorable scores since winter. And social awareness favorability ratings dropped. So as kids were rating their favorability for self-efficacy more, social awareness took a bigger hit. The SEL story, however, kind of has to do with the topic of emotional regulation. The series of questions related to managing big feelings by far received the lowest favorable scores from all students we surveyed. And for this grade span, the spring results were flat when compared to the winter data. So when we look at this by demographic, again, looking at a different lens gives us a different perspective. So to orient you to this slide, the dark blue is social awareness. The lighter blue is self-efficacy, and the orange is emotional regulation, the topic that was rated least favorably. So looking at these responses across subgroups gives us a snapshot of the strengths and needs goal that I was talking about earlier in the presentation. So you can see that across both grade spans, Asian students are the only subgroup to respond more favorably to questions for all topics than the average for students at their grade span. And within topics, there are interesting trends to note as well. So for example, female students, Asian students, and English learners responded more favorably to questions on the topic of self-social awareness. And students with disabilities and Black students responded least favorably. This data reveals patterns within subgroups. For example, for this grade span, students with disabilities differed from their grade level peers the most on the topic of self-efficacy and emotional regulation the least. So when we're thinking about how we might support students with disabilities, some help in terms of help they could advocate for their needs is really, was suggested as a good next step. At least at the grades three to five. When we look at this subgroup results for grades six through twelve, again, we see female students and Asian students reporting more favorably overall and Black students least favorably to questions about social awareness. But responses from English learners for this grade span are on par with students with disabilities. So it's interesting to think about what's happening with English learners as they progress through the levels. And part of that might have to do with learning more about how many English learners are entering our schools at the middle or high school level as compared to the elementary level. Maybe that's a function of how long they're with us. When it comes to self-efficacy, the data suggests we could support students with disabilities by addressing related skills. And so that's something that persists across grade spans. And emotional regulation consistently garners the least favorable ratings, especially with male students. Only male students and Asian students respond more favorably than their peers. So because emotional regulation came up as such a big topic, I wanted to look at this as kind of the difference by the grade level norm. And I think it's just an interesting, I chose the grade band six to twelve because the more students are in that grade band. But I think it's interesting to kind of see the favorable versus unfavorable results by group. The other topic of survey we looked at, it has to do with equity and inclusion. So the question here is what do our students have to say to us about those efforts? And we look at them by grade span as well. So the only survey topic that we had for grades three and four had to do with sense of belonging. And that's because the research that looks at kind of the appropriateness of the survey tool to the developmental level recommends that we really focus on equity and inclusion for students in grades six and above. We made the decision that grade five would be included because that's how our middle school is organized. But when we looked more deeply at the sense of belonging questions, as you can see them on the screen, how well do people at your school understand you as a person? How connected do you feel? Our elementary principals were like, our kids can understand those questions and we really want to know the answers. And so we added that to our survey tool for this year for grades three and four. And I think you can see the sense of belonging hasn't changed much since the winter. It's down by one percent. But overall, it's very strong for grades three and four. And I think the story for this survey is really around how the results vary by grade band versus how they are within subgroups. There are some trends there, too, to look at that are important. But I'm very intrigued by what happens as kids get older in our system in terms of that sense of belonging. So here I added the two topics that were included for equity inclusion for older students. And again, we included grade five because our middle school is five, six, seven, eight. But we looked at two topics, and the other one was cultural awareness and action. And you can, there's eight questions on this topic at all. And in all, the links to those questions are in your report, so I'm not going to read all of them. But I included some of them for context on the screen. So one question that students answer based on cultural awareness and action questions is how often do teachers encourage you to learn about people from different races, ethnicities, or cultures? How confident are you that your students at your school can have honest conversations with each other about race, for example? And then there are also questions that speak to actions resulting from awareness. And so this gives us a sense of, when I look at this, there's not much change in these numbers from survey administration. And when we look at it through the lens of different subgroups, you can see, you know, there's lower ratings on belonging by Black students in grades three and four, lower ratings by students with disabilities and male students. But the other six subgroups fall within the seventy to seventy-four percent favorable range. When we look at it, the subgroup's data for grades five through twelve, you can see, again, the lowest ratings on belonging by Black students. And other subgroups that are below average for the grade span include economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, female students, and white students. But one of the things that's evident in the platform, and I think it's just an interesting talking point, is the higher the grade, the lower the sense of belonging. And so remember when I showed you within the platform kind of what the, that you can compare the percentage for the national norms? One of the things that's really interesting is, you know, you might be very concerned by seeing that rates of belonging falling. But when you compare Shrewsbury High School's rate compared to other non-urban high schools with our same demographics, our percentile is actually quite high, which suggests to me that nationally, we have a problem of belonging at the high school level. Not necessarily that there's just a problem in belonging at Shrewsbury High School. And I think that's really important to know because I certainly wouldn't want our educators at any level to feel that their efforts are in vain. The other family survey, the other survey that's really important is looking at families because in many ways, families can tell us things that kids aren't as skilled as talking about or surface concerns that they hear that a kid frankly might not be comfortable putting in a survey. When we look at our family survey data, I just want to ground us in kind of the response level. So we had nine hundred and sixty family surveys completed. When I talked to Eric Bauer, who's one of our data specialists, to get a sense of what the rates of response for family surveys are in general, he said, oh, that's much better than they are for individual school family surveys. So we have some work to do to elicit more feedback from families. But I was gratified to see that was a pretty good comparison. Because some of the topics that we ask about are sensitive to families, we made sure we communicated and allowed families to opt out of the survey. And forty-two families in the spring opted out, which meant that we had sixty-four students that didn't participate at all. I want to really credit Brian LaRue and our information technology department because what they did to ensure a high level of trust around the opt-out was that we pushed the surveys out through student iPads. And those students didn't even have the option of taking the survey because they were removed from the file that was sent to the iPads. You can see the survey results for the students below as a point of comparison, too. And obviously, because we have students in school with us, we can ensure a pretty high rate of return in terms of response rates there. So these are the family survey results. We surveyed families on three topics: barriers to engagement, school climate, and school fit. And pictured to the right on this slide is how that barriers to engagement data compares to other school districts that are similar to ours. Regarding the school climate questions, although the overall percentage favorable results are lower, our results put us in the ninetieth percentile when compared to similar districts. So again, the utility of the tool for us is also giving us a bigger context for some of this information. This slide shows subgroup comparisons for all three topics. And the subgroups are a little bit different. So we have all respondents, we have Asian families, Hispanic or Latino families, white families, families with two or more races or ethnicities, families that chose other as a category, male respondents, female respondents, and then respondents who had wanted their confidentiality protected. And because our results for barriers for engagement are relatively strong, you can see those numbers on the screen are in kind of the eighty range for most of them. I thought it would be helpful to take a closer look at school climate and school fit. So again, thinking about the different scores by subgroup with the line representing kind of the average score for families, you can see trends by subgroups. So those that responded with lower favorability were consistent. So for example, when compared with male respondents, female respondents answered survey questions on both school climate and school fit less favorably, while male respondents responded more positively than the average pretty consistently. Similarly, you can see high rates of response from Asian families and lower rates of respondents from people who selected other as a category for race or ethnicity. So that's an area for me that I think begs some more nuanced conversations, either at PTO or a school council or other places where we can kind of get a sense about, some of the comments for the survey resulted with like, how come you didn't give more choices in terms of gender? And I'm certainly sensitive to people having much more diverse representation than is here. But that's the limit of using a survey tool that's not created by us. But I thought that was a fair question and one worth investigating further. So in the end, I think taken together with family survey results, the information that we gleaned from the student survey data is really helpful because we're on the verge of anticipating another strategic plan. And I certainly think we'll continue to focus on social emotional learning and inclusion and equity. And it just helps us think a little bit more about what is we want to know and how we can reflect our questions to ask better data. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the principals who, when I first suggested the use of this tool, bravely went first as pioneers. And the information technology staff that helped kind of think about how we might display this data in innovative ways. And also members of the district leadership team for their continued commitment to looking at this information and thinking about its implications for our actions. I wondered if you had any questions?
Thank you very, very much, Amy.
You're welcome.
Before I turn it over, I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. You mentioned the principals sort of being brave to go first. But I do just want to say, this is an area where people often in other, I mean, I'm sure at other schools, but in other areas of life, don't do surveys because then they'd have to share the results and have to do something about the results, right? And I think, I want to just applaud you and Dr. Sawyer and the other members of the leadership team who, I'm a firm believer that you can't change what you can't measure. And if we're not measuring and getting, understanding where we are, we don't know what we need to be working on. And we can, maybe it's more temperature thermometers, maybe it's more, there's so many different ways to sort of tackle these problems. So, but lots shy away from asking these sort of questions because they just don't want to see the results. And then, and I really appreciate where we're taking a very different perspective here. So I want to thank you for your leadership there. But let me turn it over to questions people have. Jason, please, go for it.
Two questions, if I might. Thank you for the report. To start with regarding the family surveys, I'm wondering if you can elaborate a little bit on what's asked about to measure barriers to engagement?
Sure. It's responses to questions, availability of teachers to support and answer questions about the curriculum, ease of information, how people respond when you get in touch with the school, communication, things like that.
Would language be a component to that?
Uh, I have to look. I do think we ask about language because we have data on both the respondents' language as well as the child language gathered as part of that. And I think one of the things that's really interesting to me is that our English learners and their families are feeling pretty well-connected to our schools. I'm sure that's gratifying for their teachers and for Christina Manos, the director.
And just, you know, I want to, first of all, comment that I think it's very important for us to be asking these questions and to consider these results. So I'm pleased with the report. I'm pleased that we have now a regular cycle in place with what seems to be a very easy-to-digest tool to look at these numbers. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about with the, some of the student data, now that we have a couple of cycles of this, how the results might be used in conversations about changing practices?
So one of the things that really works well for us as an engine of improvement is our professional learning communities. So at the elementary level, for example, people gather by grade level team. And teachers are very hungry for that information. There's also different teams within buildings. So we've had at every level, in the, every building at the elementary level, for example, social emotional learning group. And I'm sure that they're hungry to talk about some of these results. One of the things we've learned as a lesson is to map out when the surveys are administered, when the data will be ready, and then kind of what else is going on in the district so we really have the data in time to do that analysis. We're going to have to administer sooner in order to have some of those deep dive conversations. At the middle and high school level, that could happen by department or it could happen by job description. So I'm sure school counselors at the high school level will want to look at and talk about this information. And I'm sure that, you know, within the student services department, they're looking at the specific needs of students with disabilities. So I think different groups will look at it differently. But the data is shared with everybody purposefully, just as we share academic data and MCAS results and talk about, you know, what is the implications? What are some of the generalizations or the ideas we might expect to see? And then, you know, when we looked at the data, how does it predict with kind of our, how does it compare to our predictions? And then what are some places that we just don't have our questions answered and we want to ask more nuanced questions? But that is, I hope I answered your question. That's roughly kind of what we do with academic data. And I think what we're learning is to increasingly do that with data like this. I think it could also live alongside data from our regional youth health survey, for example, some of our expert screening. And I know that Meg Belcito, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, and her team is working on a mental health screener. So I think we'll have a lot of data to kind of help us answer some of these questions about who are we reaching and who we're not reaching yet. I think when it comes to subgroups, you know, for Black students, for example, I think we need to think about how to thoughtfully collect feedback because one of the difficulties for kind of asking follow-up questions is the relatively small number of Black students in our community who feel kind of put on the spot or are tokenized when they're asked about those questions. And so safety when you're asking follow-up questions is really key. And yet, because the data is so different for that subgroup, it's going to be really important for us to do some listening there. So I'm not really sure how best to get that information, but I know that that's going to be important for us to engage with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. When we're talking about this and reading, to me, it's that data piece that's so important. It's kind of a hallmark of our district. We always survey, we get the input from students and families and staff. And as we move into new strategic priorities and goals, like I think these, this is the data that we need as a district to help guide some of those decisions. The DEI work is going to be part of this. So I'm really happy to see that we have multiple periods of data now. And we'll be collecting it going forward because we have big decisions to make going forward as to what we want to do as a district for the next five years. So this is timely and thank you because you always lead very well in these difficult areas. Like Ms. Heffernan said, not everybody asks the hard questions, but you have to do that to make sure you're making right decisions for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm really gratified to work in a district where we say all students, we mean all students. And that means confronting some data that we wish was different. So.
Thank you very much for the report. I had a question about the questions that are asked about belonging. I know it's broken down for third through fifth, and then it's five through twelve. Are the fifth graders asked the same questions about belonging that the high school students are? Or is it modified any?
So the high school students may have a few more questions. So the high school students may have a few more questions, but the, all of the questions on belonging that the high school students are asked, are asked of the elementary. So we can look at kind of elementary versus high school answers to the strands. So remember when I showed you the emotional regulation piece and the different subquestions underneath it? We can look at how connected do you feel to the adults at your school, for example, through an elementary lens and an upper school lens? If that's what you're getting at? Yeah.
No, I just appreciate the report. I also appreciate the ease of use of that data collection tool through Panorama. I think it's great. Yeah, no, it's on par with what I use at work and I think it allows you to break things down to, you know, understand, you know, where you're moving the needle and where you're not. And it's also great that we're collecting this level of data so we can see that historical data in future years. So yeah, no, I think it's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think one of the things that we've learned from having professional communities in Truasbury is that sometimes a meeting is spent kind of gathering all the data and not having enough time left over to make sense of it. I think having tools that make it very visual, much like we've seen on the town side as well, enables us to have more conversations about, okay, so if this is the reality, then what?
That's great.
If I can ask you a question, Ms. Clowder. Some parents and others might be concerned about the confidentiality of the data and I think we made a smart choice to go with Panorama, but I wonder if you could speak to sort of two things. Who has access to, you mentioned multiple times that we can't see this and we can't see that. So maybe you could just be clear about who can see what. And then I haven't previously seen a group labeled as like confidentiality protected. So is that, in other surveys, might be more akin to prefer not to say? Is that, is that what that means? It's just not a term that I'd seen. So maybe if you could address those.
It's also if there's a small enough number of responses that would make it obvious kind of who the people are, then the platform in itself won't let us look at that more deeply. That's part of their commitment as a company. I would say that really, I'm not a software expert, but I know enough that when I talk to any software company, I'm sitting next to Brian LaRue, who knows everything. And he has a series of questions he asks about security, not just of this vendor, but of any vendor we work with because we take that so seriously. But he also manages the files that go between Panorama and our Power School carefully so that they don't get data from us and we only have a file for people who have agreed to participate. And in terms of who sees it, it's administrators within the district. And then in terms of the data for students, if I have a class in Power School, I can only see the data for the students that I'm teaching. I can't see the students' data beyond my class.
And I guess then.
So if I'm a principal, I can see my school's data and I can see district results, but I can, you know, administrators and I'm one of them can see everything.
So I guess for parents who are watching, you know, certainly we always want to give parents the opportunity to opt out, but some might be opting out, out of concerns around sort of who sees this and others may have other reasons they don't want to participate. But do individual educators, and I have twenty-two kids in my class at an elementary level, let's say, are they seeing this is how this question was answered by the student or this is sort of, you know, or the breakouts that we sort of saw? Students who identify as white in your class could, you know, fifty-eight percent answered this way or Bobby answered this way.
So you can see the percent favorable by topic? So for Amy Clowder, if I'm in Ms. Fineran's class, you could see Amy Clowder's sense of belonging, which is her percent favorable for all of the questions?
Roll up sort of category more, is that what you mean? Because you said there are many questions that kind of roll up into a category and that gives a sort of favorable, unfavorable?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, you know, I think it's, I think it's important for parents, people to know why we're asking the questions, what we're going to do with it, what we're going to measure, how we plan to use it in the future going forward. I mean, I can see lots of uses, both at the educator level, but more importantly, from where I sit at the district level, to be saying, which investments do we make to help literally move the needle on some of these? There are some places where we know, as I started saying, some of these aren't as comfortable answers that we'd like to see. You pointed out in your report about, you know, comfort in sharing thoughts about race-related topics. We'd love to see that go up. Also, I wonder if you asked all parents in America how comfortable they are talking about race-related topics, what that, what that number might be as well. But I'm really impressed with the level of work and attention to detail and I'm really glad that we're including parents as a piece of it too. So we're getting lots of, lots of perspectives.
I'm glad you asked about this security question because I can anticipate that's something that parents have concerns about and it gives me a chance to state what I think is obvious for educators and administrators in the district, which is just as we look at achievement data very carefully and respect student confidentiality, much like when you're in the hospital, you see the patient confidentiality signs everywhere. This data would live in that same area, you know, wouldn't be appropriate to talk about individual student MCAS scores outside your classroom. We would certainly have that same degree of respect and care with this data too.
Thank you. And Dr. Swer?
I want to thank Ms. Clowder for the presentation and for her hard work getting this tool off the ground, certainly Mr. LaRue in the IT department. Something that has been very helpful and I think it demonstrates, you know, you can see the ease of use and things that we just wouldn't have the capacity to build internally. And that's when you want to invest in a tool. And I think that that investment, those initial larger investment to get things up and off the ground and then the investment next year is a bit less than what it was this year. But it's still something that we want to be sure that we're using those dollars effectively and to be able to look at district level, school level, down to the individual student level as appropriate in ways to, you know, see how we're doing and do a check-in, but also to then make determinations about what strategies and what approaches are most fruitful in terms of moving these, our approach forward. I think that when we began our strategic plan five years ago, I think maybe this product was getting off the ground, but to be able to have something that matches an area that's we've deemed as a community of great importance and to be able to really get a sense of where our students are on that in a way that's been validated. This is not just a random kind of product. This is one that's been validated and it has data that we can compare nationally as well to give us some context. So that's something and by a variety of indicators. So I think it will be a helpful tool for us and useful tool and we'll be looking forward to seeing some longer-term trends that hopefully are moving in the positive direction. It's obviously notoriously difficult to isolate variables in a structure like we have, but we hope some of the things we have started doing, whether that's the ability for us to implement advisories at the middle and the high school level, whether it's the social emotional learning work that's been happening with our educators and our school counseling staff, things that are in the works that are going to be, start to become more concrete in the coming year and years. And that's the intent, of course, just like in an academic side, when you implement a new curriculum or a new instructional strategy, you're looking for evidence of whether it's working and that applies as well in the affective, social, emotional domain. So we're pleased to be able to have this product or this tool and we'll look forward to reporting future data to the committee.
Thank you so very much for being with us. And then next item on our agenda is in the area of finance and operations and it's an electric vehicle bus grant application procedure and an update. Mr. Collins, I know you're here to talk to us about a federally funded grant opportunity. And so I will, it looks like we have both an overview of the program and grant timeline and information on the district's strategy around electric buses.
Thank you. I have a presentation for you this evening that I'm going to, I can call up here quickly. And I know that you have the same one in your school committee book.
Yep, thank you. And I know you have at least one person in the audience who's interested in the climate and transportation space, so he's stayed with us this evening and probably for electric buses.
Okay. Thank you for your patience and let me get right into it here. So as you mentioned, I want to give the school committee and the larger community a bit of an overview on a federal grant opportunity that's available throughout the United States for the first year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the program is, the funding, who are eligible recipients, the grant timeline, and also what I'm looking at in terms of what could be our school department's strategy. So in terms of the overview, as you can see here, this is a federal initiative that's part of the 2021 bipartisan infrastructure law. And the purpose, or the goal of the program is to replace the current national fleet of diesel school buses with no emission or low emission replacement buses. And so the national estimates are through the Federal Department of Education that about twenty-five million children ride to school in a bus every day, that there's about a half a million school buses, and that this kind of large-scale effort to replace diesel with alternative fuel or electric-powered buses will decrease the negative environmental impact and also at the same time, hopefully mitigate any kind of student health concerns that are ongoing. So this is a five-year program that runs on the federal fiscal years, fiscal twenty-two to twenty-six. There's five billion dollars total allocated as part of this initiative and it's basically a billion dollars per year for the next five years, of which on an annual basis, or at least for this first year, five hundred million or half will go towards zero emission school buses or electric-powered buses and another half a million is earmarked for so-called clean school buses or those powered by liquefied natural gas, compressed natural gas, hydrogen, propane, or other biofuels. These are the amount of grant awards that could be provided on a per-bus basis. And so the way to read this chart basically is where it says in the first, or I should say, second column, ZE class seven plus. And you can see where it says school buses serving districts that need one or more prioritization categories, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So that class seven is your traditional large-scale eighty-eight-seat bus. And so the zero emission is the electric bus. So if you were to be awarded a grant for one electric school bus, you could be awarded up to a maximum of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for an electric-powered bus. And that's the approximate purchase cost of an electric bus right now, which in a diesel-powered bus right now, depending how it's outfitted, and there are a lot of options you can outfit a school bus with, but kind of a traditional school bus is probably going to be in the range of, you know, closer to two hundred thousand dollars. So these are nearly double the cost. And so this is again, another reason why the federal government has stepped in to help provide seed money for this nationwide transition. And then you can see if you go further to the right, you know, if it's a class three or six, which would be smaller-sized buses or half buses or smaller, you can see the award amount per buses for electric is up to two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then CNG, of course, is natural gas and then propane. So the amounts are much less for the alternative fuel vehicles as opposed to electric. So they're clearly trying to incentivize a push towards electric-powered vehicles. And then where it says buses serving other eligible school districts. So if you're not in their so-called prioritization list, which we are not on their prioritization list for this coming grant cycle for this upcoming year, then the maximum award would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for example, for a large-scale electric-powered bus. And the prioritization criteria is basically based upon socioeconomics. So those communities with lower socioeconomics would get more funding and those with better socioeconomics would get less with the thinking that they have the money themselves to support this initiative as well. So that's how the funding works and the grant award limits. And so just another way to say the same thing is, you know, while we're not a priority district, if we were to apply for a bus, you know, our limit would be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on how many grant applicants there are and how many awardees that they want to award. You know, we could get maybe fifty thousand dollars per bus. So the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the maximum. And what they are doing is they're limiting school districts to apply for a maximum of up to twenty-five buses. So you can apply for one, you can apply for five or up to twenty-five. So eligible recipients, excuse me, recipients are, of course, you know, school districts are structured differently throughout the nation. So it could be a local government that's providing school bus services. You know, in this, in our case, it's, you know, school bus contractor, they can also be an eligible recipient. So private contractors can apply for funding, nonprofit school transportation associations and tribes and tribal organizations. Again, here's the awardee prioritization, high-needs school districts, low-income areas, and then tribal schools. And again, we fall into neither of those three prioritized categories at this particular point. The grant timeline is basically, they opened up the window for application on May twentieth. In fact, I was at my annual conference for Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials in the middle of May and there was a program coordinator for this program giving a presentation on Thursday, I think it was May nineteenth or eighteenth or what have you, and he let us know that it was going to be the following day or the following day thereafter that the grant application period would be opened. So we were able to kind of hear firsthand from him, he works out of the Boston office a little bit more around this. In September, they're going to review the applications and begin the selection process. They'll make some notifications in the October time period. And then if you were to be awarded a grant, then you have a longer runout period in which to place a purchase order for a new bus and receive funding. And then, you know, the funding, that could be stretched out all the way through October of 2024. Of course, given the long lead time for vehicle ordering right now and how much demand there is in school bus plants for electric school buses will kind of play into that as well. So the way that I'm seeing this, of course, is probably much like all of you in terms of just kind of passenger vehicle industry, that a lot of this is moving towards electric-powered vehicles. I'm sure there's even more pressure with five-dollar a gallon gas. And that I think it would be prudent for us, my plan is to apply for two electric school buses in this first round of applications. And, you know, part of the, while the chances are in the category of slim to none in terms of us receiving funding for this first application period, I think it's worth going through. You know, you're never going to win an award and not participate, but also probably more importantly, we can kind of learn the process and be, you know, in the best position for, you know, round two, which would be presumably next springtime and summertime when they'd be opening up an application period for year two in the second billion dollars of funding. And so maybe at that time, the prioritization list is fulfilled or partially fulfilled and we'd have better chances, but we'd just be in a better position, I think, in terms of the application. As a couple of side notes, I did want to mention that, well, with respect to this, of course, if we were to be successful, you know, of course, again, I would make a presentation back to the school committee and of course, the school committee then still has the authority to accept or not accept the grant, like you do with all of our grants. So certainly would be much more conversation involved if we were successful before moving forward. Separately, just a couple of side notes. One is that we've had, I believe it's two meetings now with our bus contractor and owner of AA Transportation to talk about kind of making some movement towards an electric bus fleet. This was really kind of spurred, if you will, with some support and urging from our partners in Selco. And they have in fact, not related to this, but related in terms of electric vehicles. not related to this, but related in terms of electric vehicles. They have installed passenger electric vehicle chargers right behind us here, behind Town Hall. There's capacity for four vehicle charging stations there. We have vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations at Beal School right now. And we worked with Selco and the high school and identified a location in the, in the back of Shoesbury High School where additional electric vehicle charging stations will be installed this summertime once that equipment is received. So Selco and the town have received some green energy grant money. And, and that's what's funding those projects. And we've made it known to them that we would like to expand passenger electric vehicle charging stations at all of our schools for the convenience of staff and parents. And of course, those would be, the way that they're operating is basically the consumers who wish to charge their vehicle are paying basically the same customer rate, if you will, that you're paying for using electricity in your home. So it's no different. It's, and of course, we know Selco has traditionally low rates. So it's, it's not on the school department budget, it's not, you know, the power's not coming out of the school department budget nor the town budget. The consumer who wishes to charge the vehicle is paying that, but at a very competitive rate. So that's just kind of future planning with respect to our, our school buildings. But that's, in short, the presentation halfway. Just want to kind of keep the committee apprised. In our case, like many, many, many cases across the Commonwealth and the nation, we don't own these school buses. So how would it work with respect to these grant monies? And so the EPA has, you know, made pathways for that in which during our application process, we need to identify ourselves as having a contracted fleet with a private provider and who our current private provider is. And if we were successful, the, the money flow would basically go from the federal government to the town of Shoesbury in custody of the school department. And then we would turn over those funds to AA Transportation, who would then be obligated to procure the vehicles that were in the application and use those vehicles in support of our school district operations for a minimum of five years. And of course, when I was at my Mass Bowl Conference and sitting around with a bunch of business managers saying, wait, wait, what? We only have one year left in our contract, or we only got two years, or we only do three-year contracts. How is that all going to work? And, you know, at the time, the EPA didn't really have a, a lot of answers around that. So there's a little bit more information to come, I think, in the future about those what-if scenarios. So I can't answer that question right now. It's really going to be up to the EPA how that all works. So that's in summary, what the plan forward is for the summertime is to submit an application for two buses and just kind of learn the process and, and see where it goes. But I'm happy to answer any questions that committee members might have.
Thank you.
First of all, just a comment, I'm, I'm pleased to see that you're, you've taken the time to thoughtfully explore this opportunity. I think this is the direction we're inevitably going to be headed in, in one form or another. And while it doesn't seem like this is necessarily something that is going to produce results for us quickly, I'm glad that we're taking steps. Sort of a couple of specific questions, Mr. Collins, which you, to your last point, you might not be able to answer. If we were to receive an award, would our contracted transportation service provider be the owner of the buses? And they would just be obligated to, to use them in a manner consistent with the program? Would SPS actually start owning buses?
No. So the, the, we would transfer the funds to AA Transportation. And then they would use those funds to procure the vehicle and they would be the owner of that vehicle and be responsible for its maintenance and inspections and all the things that they are currently, so it would be part of their fleet.
And just only other question, in terms of, you know, I think of depreciation on a personal vehicle. How long does a traditional bus typically last? And, and I'm curious if you know how much lifespan one might get out of, of a bus like this? You might not know, I'm just curious.
Sure. And again, I don't pretend to be an expert, but you know, in terms of like a, a diesel bus right now, and, and I don't mean to, you know, your mileage will vary. I mean, depending on the mileage of the bus. And so right now, you know, we're working with a, a provider, AA Transportation, who has a strategy and much prefers to maintain a very modern fleet of buses. And it's to our benefit because, you know, there's, there's great reliability in that in terms of those buses starting up and all the current and latest safety features. And, you know, the, our, our contract, when we go out to bid, our contract says that, you know, at the start of the contract, I, I think, I, I got to double check myself, but I don't think a bus can be any older than like seven years or maybe five years at the start of a contract. But we typically have newer buses than that based upon the owner preference. From what I understand with electric buses, you know, certainly the, the maintenance of the frame, wheels and steering, you know, they, they can last, you know, 10, 12 years, kind of depending on the, where you are in the country. And, and the battery life is going to really kind of depend on, again, its use. You know, eight years was a, a kind of a roundabout figure that was used around the battery life. But then, you know, certainly you could replace batteries and extend the life of that particular bus. So there's just another really interesting side feature to this thing, which is, you know, school buses kind of tend to fit into this kind of really neat category of being useful and electric buses useful in a school bus environment because they have a limited, typically from home-to-school transportation, you know, it's only a certain amount of miles per day. So it's not like they're taking very long trips. And then, you know, they're operated 180 out of 365 days a year. So, you know, there, there could be some use where bus providers, you know, become kind of in the energy business as well, where they're actually putting energy back into the grid when the vehicle's not being used and there's high demand or peak demand for electric usage. The electric provider could call on those buses if they're connected to the grid to pull energy out of them, say in summertime months during peak demand. And then the school bus provider, you know, could be a revenue source for them. So that's just a whole other, like down a rabbit hole piece, but just kind of another interesting aspect of, you know, the, the utility of electric buses in the school bus environment.
Thank you.
A question you answered, I was the ownership, because I was wondering who would own it and maintenance costs. So that would be the contractor, it would not be the school department.
Right.
Looking at this grid about the amount of grant that we could potentially get. So say we get $250,000, but it costs $375,000. That additional cost would be borne by the contractor buying the, purchasing this vehicle, which would still be a significant amount toward the purchase. But it wouldn't, there would be no additional cost to the district for the buses, if I understand this correctly.
Well, we, we would have to, I think, enter into some negotiations with the, the contractor around that. And I think there, there's a lot of, again, details around that, around the, the value, the difference of that value in what, how much value would accrue to the owner and how much value kind of accrues to us. So I, I think that that's really kind of an unanswered question right now, but one that's important to consider if we were to become, you know, success, successful in getting a, a, a grant. So I think it's subject to negotiation.
Okay.
It's probably the best answer I could give you right now.
Okay, thank you. Does the bus contractor have to participate in our submission? Do they have to say that they are going to, you know, come unboered if we, we were successful in getting our grant award?
That's a good question. And again, I haven't gone through the whole grant application yet. That's really part of, you know, the, the reason for going through this, this, this cycle. Certainly they have to be named. I'm not quite sure if it requires, you know, signature or, you know, attestation that they're going to participate or not. That's something that I'll have to find out. But one would think it would be part of the, the grant application since we have, they have to be a named contractor.
Thank you very much. I spend more time now thinking about buses than you might imagine. But, and Nolo buses are, are certainly all the rage. And I think then you raised some really interesting points about why schools particularly might make sense for electric vehicles, given their school bus patterns. And, and the, the grant award amounts, I would just also wanted to confirm, what, in our case, since we use a contractor, but in any case, an eligible recipient can use it both to procure the bus, but also for any facilities, you know, putting in charging stations and maintenance is different and all of that. And so they can use it, it's sort of an all-in.
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep, for charging stations, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I don't have all the answers to all the, the questions at this, this particular point. It is very much a learning process. But certainly, you know, we'll have to check all those blocks, you know, along the way.
I think to your point, Mr. Collins, this is, this is a direction that's going to happen. And sort of how, this feels like the fir, somewhat a first step. And obviously, the federal government's putting a lot of money. We might not be in a prioritized district right now. But there are lots of schools and lots of school buses in America. So this will keep, there also will keep coming back at us. And there are reasons, you know, broader for the community for us to be thinking about this. So thank you for taking, taking the lead. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add on this matter?
I appreciate Mr. Collins moving quickly and thinking strategically about, could have very easily said, well, we, unlike, we'll be eligible, so let's push this off. But I think, you know, testing the process and, you know, with the outside chance we could get something first year, but to be able to be ready for when we're more likely to get a grant of this nature. It's pretty clear that this, this is where transportation is moving over the next many years. And I think the more we can be prepared as a school district, I just appreciate the strategic forward thinking. And we'll stay tuned for more info to come in the coming months and years.
Great. Thank you. And Mr. Collins, I know you're joining us for our next matter, next couple, I think. And this is on, also in finance and operations for fiscal year budget 22. A final report and a vote ultimately on our budget transfers. And so I understand you have an update for us on the budget status. We did receive materials in our book regarding this. Is there also a presentation, Mr. Collins?
There's not a PowerPoint presentation, just basically the report that I have provided to you. I just wanted to hit the highlights and I think, may have mentioned, but I'll just repeat this as an item, that is an annual report around the status of the annual town meeting appropriation. And also asking for a vote at the end to, for the school committee to make transfers, allow us to make transfers between accounts where there are surpluses and particular deficits. So I do want to provide an overview to you. Certainly fiscal 22 is a very interesting year from a financial perspective and a lot of other perspectives as well. You know, our, our annual operating budget for the current fiscal year is $75,722,168. Of course, there are many other types of funds that are used in terms of support of the operations that are not included in this. This is town meeting appropriation. We did receive a significant increase in, over fiscal 21, 11.36%. Again, as part of the override agreement and supported by this community's voters, for which we're very appreciative of. The increase certainly was a result of pent-up demand for years of struggling from a financial perspective. And then also opening up the new Major Howard W. Beal Elementary School and all the associated elementary redistricting that was resulting from that. And then also certainly the, the school committee's, you know, deliberate decision to finally provide tuition-free full-day kindergarten for the first time in Shoesbury. So a lot of milestones were, were met. And there was a lot kind of built into this particular school year and fiscal year. At the time that I put this report together, which was June 7th, we were about 94% of the way through the fiscal year. Of course, our fiscal year ends on June 30th of this year. And we had completed 96% of our school days. So kind of two different markets, we're well into the year. And it's, it's easy to forecast the weather at this particular point. And so to that end, it's very safe to say that we're going to fully expend our town meeting appropriation of the $75.7 million. Before I get into some of those details, just a brief note around COVID funding. And, you know, there were three kind of major buckets of federal funding that all school districts received, S R 1, S R 2, and S R 3. They were kind of allotted out at different time periods. And we have fully exhausted our S R 1 funding. And we partially have used S R 2 and S R 3 funds. And so those will continue on to successive future school years until their runout periods. Back to the town meeting appropriation, there, there was a lot of variation. There was just a lot of moving parts to the school year for the reasons I mentioned before, with lots of new hiring and redistribution of elementary students and kind of having a post-COVID year, but not really a post-COVID year. And so we had a lot of variation within the overall budget, while the budget's going to land at zero. When we look at these various categories on the second page of the report, from, from budget to actual, there was a lot of variation in, in those categories, in some of those categories. And so I'm going to just highlight the ones that had a variation of greater than 10%. And so the first category that I just want to remark about is day-to-day and long-term substitute teachers. So we are going to land this approximately 35% over budget in that particular category. And, you know, if you look at the report, you know, the budget is just over $900,000. And I'm, I'm projecting that by the time we finish the final payroll in early July for the school year, that we will have spent more than $1.2 million on day-to-day and long-term substitutes. And of course, it's due to the pandemic and lots of absences with staff. And, you know, we were struggling in the middle of the school year just to keep schools open because it was very difficult to get substitute teachers as a result of that. We asked the school committee to raise the rate, daily rate for substitutes from $90 to $100 to remain competitive. So that was another factor leading into why we're 35% over budget. The next category is, it's called employee benefits. It, it, it has just a few things in there. It's not health insurance, that's, that's covered by the town. But basically, it relates to tuition reimbursement and retiree sick leave, benefits upon retirement. And that, that category is going to land about 30% under budget. And it's really a result of fewer teachers submitting for tuition reimbursement than budgeted. And also frankly, as was mentioned earlier, fewer retirees than we typically have, which was a, a pleasant surprise. So that will be under budget. Special education transportation, it will be approximately 11% over budget, excuse me, under budget with fewer outplayed students for out-of-district placements. Special ed tuitions, about 31% under budget. Again, very difficult for us to get some students placed because of long delays in these private school placements. And in the prior year, a number of students who were eligible to receive their high school certificate of completion did so instead of staying on like they could have for some additional years of service. So we were looking at about 31% under budget. Again, unfortunately vocational tuitions, we're going to land there 17% under budget because of the changing nature of the admissions process at Assamid Valley Vocational High School. We budgeted for, I think it was 35 students from grade nine to nine to attend, and we had only 12 accepted. So that provided a surplus in that particular category. Administrative contract services for things like job advertising, we had to do extensively more job advertising to get more outreach, to get people to fill vacancies for teaching and paraprofessional roles, additional legal services. We're going to be 42% over budget there. We've also spent additional monies for safety and security with respect to video surveillance and radio equipment repairs. Educational contract services were expected to be about 12% under budget. Again, just fewer services delivered to special needs students from outside contractors. And textbooks, curriculum materials, 100 and almost 200% over budget. So double, we're spending double what we had budgeted. And again, we looked at some opportunity with funding that we had to finally meet some need for investment in media center collections across the district, additional textbooks that we had a lot of pent-up demand for, and some additional digital subscriptions for curriculum. So we're very pleasantly surprised to be able to do that this year. And also additional monies into educational supplies, so that budget will be over by about 129%. We did, based upon a recommendation from our Brian LaRue, our information technology director, really urged us to procure the, the grade nine and five iPads early, rather than wait to, what we would typically do would be wait till the fiscal 23 budget was approved and order those in July, the new fiscal year. But really, the lead time to get that equipment is so long, he urged us if we had the resources to procure them. So we did do that in, in May. And we're slated to now be able to receive those on time, to get those in the students' hands in time for school opening. So that was very wise advice from him. Other miscellaneous, again, video surveillance, I, that was out of that category. Lots of moving all across the district staff. So we, we pay a moving stipend if teachers have to do additional work to pack up classrooms, and there's lots of moving. And then under budget with utilities, telephone utilities. So that's how we will fare with the, the general fund budget. But overall, it will be fully expended by June 30. Just one other fund that I want to mention that is closely related to this, and that's the Circuit Breaker Fund. These are funds that are received from the state's Circuit Breaker Program for high-cost special needs students. We began this year, there's, there's a chart in your report that shows that we began fiscal 22 with a balance in that account of just over $2.5 million intentionally. And the reimbursement for this year is going to be just over $3.2 million. And our plan for use of those funds is to, in order to balance the general fund budget, is to use $2.6 million, and then have a resulting year-end balance of $3.1 million. Now, those funds can be carried over from one year to the next. There is a maximum. You cannot carry over any more than you received in that particular fiscal year. So that's something to be careful about. And so we'll, we'll end the year with just over $3.1 million, or about 98% of the maximum threshold, but still under the threshold. So we're in a solid position for that going forward. And so what we'll do with those funding, that funding, is that $3.1 million that we kind of have on account, if you will, that is the amount that we will now be able to use and plan for in developing the fiscal 24 budget. And so we do not need to rely upon forecasting from the state what's going to happen at that level. We'll have the funds on account, like many other school districts do. They, they use the funds that they have known, and takes away the forecasting and variability. And then the funds that we receive in, in fiscal 24 will be used in the successive year. So it's a good spot to be in from a financial planning perspective. So that's just a little bit more on, on the Circuit Breaker funding mechanism. So, I know that's a lot of details, and it's a lot of numbers, but I did want to just kind of walk the committee through that, because there was such large categorical variations. I don't expect the same type of variation next year. I think things are going to be, you know, closer on a category basis. But as you can see, other categories, those are just the ones that are over 10%. Other categories, you know, some of the other salary categories were just really, really tight and close to what we had budgeted. So anyway, that's how we fared.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments, school committee members?
Just like to say that lead time on procuring iPads is real, because I, my company ordered me a new MacBook in January. I just got it Monday. So it's good to get a jump start on that.
Right. Yeah, that would be, you know, I won't say a showstopper, but that would really hinder, you know, us at the start of the year if we did not have those in kids' hands.
Yep, definitely.
Wise advice from, from Brian LaRue.
Certainly, Mr. Collins, it has been an unusual year in a lot of different ways, but financially is no, no exception here. Lots of things outside of our control, from, from the COVID pieces to the VoTEC issues. It's just a lot, lot going on here. So I appreciate the detailed report that you have in, in front of us, going through what you, what you discussed tonight. If we have no further questions from the committee member, then I would take a motion that the committee authorize the administration to make budget transfers from the original budget plan as necessary to eliminate deficits and surpluses, with the intent of fully expending the total fiscal year 22 appropriation by June 30, 2022, and balancing of all accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor can do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
All right. Thank you all very much.
And I think we have, one more finance and operations item tonight, and that is for fiscal year 23, non-represented staff compensation adjustments. And we will be hoping to take a vote tonight. Each year, the superintendent does recommend changes in compensation rates for the coming fiscal year for our non-represented staff, salaries, clerical support, information technology staff. I know we did receive a memo from you, Dr. Sawyer, about those rate changes, along with a rate table. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And just to summarize, this is, you know, these are the employees who are not covered by collective bargaining units, and the school committee sets compensation each year. It's our intent, just as the school committee always strives in any employee compensation, to be able to have a level of pay that attracts candidates and retains them. And certainly, this has been a very stable work for us, for us, for us over time. We're deeply appreciative of the work that they do. These are all of our secretaries, clerical administration staff, IT support, et cetera. You did earlier in the spring, set the rate for the extended school care program based on that. It's a self-funded program, so these are for other non-represented staff. Just a quick reminder that in FY21, which was a very difficult year for us, in the midst of the pandemic and prior to the override, we eliminated 30 positions across the district, would have eliminated more if a variety of employee groups did not make sacrifices. That included this group, which experienced a total compensation freeze that year. For the current fiscal year, a year ago, the school committee agreed to raising the rates by 4%, which would represent sort of the typical 2% increase over the two years, so that they would not have lost ground. Because of taking that freeze, of course, they're never receiving, they'll never get back the money they lost in that single year when their rates did not go up. And so I think that's something still that's worthy of recognition. For this coming year, my recommendation is for a 2.25% cost of living adjustment. And then to also, in order to be competitive, add a new top step, which would be a sixth step, that is 2% higher than the current top step. So for employees who are still making step increases, they would get the 2.25% increase, plus whatever step they're eligible for. And those who are currently on the top step would get that additional 2% new step on top of the 2.25%. This stays within our budget that's set overall at 4.25%. This is what we looked at in terms of being able to both acknowledge the sacrifice they made last year, and that they lost some money from out of their pocket to help us save jobs, and also to ensure that we're continuing to attract and retain in what, of course, we all know is a high inflation environment. So that is the recommendation before you this evening. There's a compensation table in your materials that gives the specific dollar hourly amounts. And other, myself and Mr. Collins would be happy to answer any questions that you have about the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer. Any questions or comments from the committee members? Pretty detailed memo in our, in our materials. And I would also note, I just forwarded to Mr. Mysikar a podcast about the difficulties of keeping people in municipal and school budget positions across America right now. And so there's, we have a wonderful and dedicated staff, and we'd certainly want to, want to make the steps necessary to retain them. If there's no other questions, then I would ask for a motion to approve the compensation adjustments to non-represented staff for fiscal year 2023, as detailed in the memo provided by Dr. Sawyer.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor can do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, we'll pass unanimously, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you very much. We do have approval of minutes. The school committee meetings held on June 8, 2022 were provided to our email addresses. And I don't know if folks have had a chance to review that, if there's any corrections or changes that need to be made. Seeing none, the committee will accept those minutes as presented. And we do need to go into executive session this, this evening for the, to be seeking a motion for the purposes of addressing Mass General Law 30A 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirement known as purpose 7 of open meeting law, for the purposes of reviewing, approving, and or releasing executive session minutes. Also, for the purposes of addressing Mass General Law 30A 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declares known as purpose 3, regarding the Shrewsbury Educational Association's Unit A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury, excuse me, the Cafeteria Workers Association, and for the purposes of addressing General Law 30A 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, known as purpose 2, where deliberation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning this evening. I have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And roll call vote is, is necessary? Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Mr. Wansky?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.